... council meeting, the Village of Woodline Regular Council Meeting, June twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Clerk has the official time. We'll all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, right now, we just want to pause and just thank you for allowing us to come out and make the decisions here at the Village of Woodline. We ask God right now that you just touch each family represented here in the Village of Woodline. Give them a special evening and give them peaceful rest. Lord, we ask a special blessing upon Yvonne Matthews as she is grieving the passing of her only daughter. And, Lord, we just ask for healing in this land right now. Lord, we ask in these blessings in thy Son Jesus' name and for his sake, amen.
Amen.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Poole?
Present.
Esther Boyd?
Present.
Rosemary Brown?
Present.
Cindy Chandler?
Present.
Pamela Fitzgerald?
Present.
Robert Lawson?
Present.
Aaron Tillman III.
Very well. All right. Reading and disposal of previous minutes Regular Council Meeting from May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. I need a motion to approve those meetings in front of us, minutes in front of us, with any deletions additions, corrections to those minutes.
I'd like to make the motion, Mayor, to approve the minutes from the Regular Council Meeting held on May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second it.
Motion been moved and properly second. All ayes.
Aye.
Very well. I need a motion to approve the Special Council Meeting Minutes from June first, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve the Special Council Meeting Minutes from June first, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second.
Motion been moved and properly second. All ayes.
Aye.
Very well. I need a motion to approve the Special Council Meeting from June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve the Special Council Meeting Minutes from June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second.
Motion been moved and properly second. All ayes.
Aye.
Very well. All right. Approve the minutes. Present, please. Entrem, we have a presentation today, is that correct?
Yes, we do.
Please confirm me.
We have Jessica from Women Helping Women.
Okay. Ms. Jessica, how are you?
Jessica, how are you too?
You're welcome. Welcome.
Hi. So, my name is Jessica Gordon. I'm here to talk about the program DIVER, in which we partner with Woodline. And so, DIVER is a part of Women Helping Women. So, DIVER stands for Domestic Violence Enhanced Response Team. And so, we're partnered with twenty-four jurisdictions in Hamilton County. The goal is to be countywide, so eventually, we will be able to respond out countywide. So, the whole gist of DIVER is law enforcement agencies, if they get on scene, and it's intimate partner violence, domestic violence, they can call an advocate out to kind of touch base, safety plan. We talk about like the next steps. We go over like arraignment and things like that with them. And then, we usually leave. So, we try to be quick, try to get on scene. A lot of the people that we encounter, they never heard of Women Helping Women. They don't know the services out there. So, we're happy to be out here in Woodline. Chief Williams has been amazing. All the officers have been amazing. All of our advocates say good things about responding out here. We actually have an advocate that lives out in Woodline, and she's able sometimes to walk on foot to scenes. So, we're just very happy to be partnered with you all. And so, we officially launched in Woodline in September, two thousand and twenty-one, but DIVER as a whole, it launched in two thousand and eighteen in Cincinnati. So, there was a homicide due to domestic violence, and so, they reached out to Women Helping Women to see if there's any type of things that we could do to be preventative, so we can avoid intimate partner violence and homicides. So, that's kind of how DIVER started. So, again, we're in twenty-four jurisdictions. We will be countywide eventually. We are hiring, so if anybody is interested in a job, please let us know. All of our advocates work remote, and they're usually on call, and we have about three to nine, I'm sorry, six to nine advocates staffed across. So, we just try to do what we can to support our community.
Wonderful. I like your mission. I like what you're doing. Certainly, Women Helping Women, I just love that program. So, again, I applaud you for your efforts in that program. And thanks, Chief. We appreciate that. Yes, thank you so much. Any questions for our speaker?
How does our community know that you're here?
That is a very good question. I know that I'm trying to work closely with Chief Williams and all the officers to see if there's like any upcoming community events that we could come up to and like table at. I know we missed the Juneteenth celebration, so I apologize for that. But no, like I would love to come out to the community more, any type of events that you all, we would happily show up and table and give out like our resources and things like that. I have like a couple little trifles that I will leave here, as well as like my business cards that have like our twenty-four hour hotline number and like what we do as far as like services for Women Helping Women.
Nice.
What is your acronym again? You said DIVER.
It's D E R T.
D B. Okay, B R T. Okay, thank you.
Okay, got it. All right.
You got a question?
May I ask a question, please? Do you want to offer any type of self-defense class for the women?
Right now, we don't, unfortunately, but I think that would be a good idea. I know that like our advocates have had kind of like self-defense training or like situational awareness, like being on a scene, because we're not law enforcement. So, they've kind of learned how to, you know, kind of protect themselves. But I know there's other officers that we are, jurisdictions that we're partnering with that specialize in that, and we kind of see if that's available in the community. I don't know if anybody in Woodline has that training. We could set it up with them as well. But I do think that would be a good opportunity.
Good. Very well. All right. Well, thank you so much again for coming tonight. Appreciate that. Good information. Good information. Very well. All right. Clerk, has anyone signed up to adjust counsel?
Yes, we have two.
Okay.
We have, you know, we end up with...
I'm sorry?
One minute appointment confirmation.
That's where I was.
Yeah. Did you get a hold of them?
Appointment confirmation today is the twenty-second. I'm right here. I asked, is there any police confirmation?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said...
Yes. Is there any police confirmation?
Yes, sir.
We have two. Chief, that's your key.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Hey.
Very good afternoon. So, as usual, I can't overstate the shortage that we have in our staffing. Right now, we are technically down two officers. We have one who is gone. So, we have one immediate opening. We have an officer who is injured. We have an officer who is in the latter processes of going to another agency. So, the two, I've given bios on the two officers, well, I've given bios on two officers, yes, sir, who we would definitely be interested in as a department. Again, we have an immediate need for one. I think that hiring two is getting out in front of what could be a potential issue with another officer leaving. Just with the current staffing model, I mean, I understand we have some work to do on it. Myself, Village Manager, Finance Director, we're working on that piece of it. But as far as bringing in extra body, a second person, I think that's getting it out in front of us having this talk again. Once the officer who's testing gets, it's looking like it's going to be a goal that he's probably going to leave. So, that was my reasoning for getting you the bios. I think I gave very brief bios in the last packet in our last meeting. So, I just wanted to present them again a little more professionally, get a little more, give you more in-depth information on them, let you know that both are ready to go. So, meaning we decide to bring them on. They've already been vetted out.
Right.
So, they are ready to come. Both came to us. So, we're in a position now as a department where we have people coming to us, which is a good position for us.
Is this the two that you mentioned to us about, I don't know, a couple weeks ago?
Yes, same two.
One coming from another agency?
Yes, yes, sir. One is from Glendale. Another one, he came to us from Colrain, but just needing a position. He needed, he's currently working for another agency.
Okay.
But still interested in coming here.
Okay.
As of a conversation this afternoon, both still.
Okay. Counsel, is there any questions for the interim in terms of what has been presented to you guys for the two officers that he is recommending?
What's the total amount, number of officers you have?
Right now, have staff of ten. So...
You're going down to eight possibly, right?
We have ten staff, but we have one who is injured and one who's leaving. So, it would be eleven, half the other officers. So, we're at ten.
Excuse me, just for clarification, when you say staff, that's officers, not senior staff, not supervisors?
That's total. Again, right now, we're running, have an officer injured, so we have nine.
Okay. I got you. Okay. Okay.
Does this take a minute?
All right. Any other questions? Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. If there's nobody has any questions, I just need a motion to approve the officers that has been presented to us by interim chief for the appointment for police officer here in the Village of Woodline.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second.
Go ahead.
I'll second the motion.
All right. I'd like a roll call on that, please.
And just to be clear, the motion's for both officers.
Yes, that motion is for both officers, correct.
For both officers.
Yes.
Motion to approve appointment of both.
Yes.
Okay, Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Pamela Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Aaron Tillman III?
Aye. Right. Very well. All right. Clerk, has anybody signed in to comment to counsel?
Yes, we have two, Mayor.
Okay.
Diane Byrd?
Ms. Byrd?
Hello. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I came today to actually give a public thank you to your first responders. The Fire Department has been active in training our members at Mount Zion Baptist Church of Woodline, where I'm a member of the trustee board. And all of our members who have been trained under them are just really bubbling with joy with the service that they receive, the training they receive from them. Like to give a special thanks to Assistant Chief Pittman, because he's the one who arranged for all of the participants, well, all of the trainers to come and train our participants. And just to let you know that one day, Chief Johnson came as a trainer, and our members could not believe that the chief would actually come down and train their members. So, they were just bubbling and overjoyed that he would come and train our members. And our members are older, well, they're more senior group.
Yes, I like that.
So, they were really, they were really patient with them, and they took their time and made sure that they answered every question that they had, so that they were confident that they could, the trainees could go out and provide CPR when needed.
Wonderful.
So, my mission today was just to come down and say thank you.
Welcome.
And we appreciate everything they do. And we also appreciate your police department, because they keep an eye on us down there at the church, and we, they help us to feel really safe.
Good.
While we're worshiping. So, thank you for your first, lending your first responders to us.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
We really appreciate it.
We appreciate that. It makes us feel good.
Thanks.
It does make us feel good when we have those from the public to come out and just share a life experience, right? I think that we all share the same sentiment about our Police and Fire Department. But go back and tell them that our chief gets his feet wet, and he gets dirty too.
All the time.
Chief Johnson, yeah, he steps in and with his boots on at all times, as well as our interim chief. So, thank you so much for coming out and sharing that with us. They need, we need to hear that. We need to hear those things. So, again, thank you.
One more, Mayor.
Okay. Good evening.
Appreciate being here with you. The reason why I'm here is that I know that we've got our new website, and so far, it seems to be working out really well, and we're all kind of excited about it. I do have a couple of little areas where I think it can be tweaked. So, that's, that's why I'm here. Okay. So, the first thing is that Woodline Council Meetings are not on the calendar of the website, the way I saw it. And that, that's important, because I kind of missed last month's meeting, and I was traveling too. And the second part of that is that it's kind of difficult, it's just a little bit difficult with your mobile phone to navigate. So, if you say, for example, click on a link, and you want it to take you somewhere, sometimes it takes you outside of the website. So, or it takes you to the homepage. So, if we could just get those things done, and I don't know what else, but those are the things I found trying to use it, we'd have a great website.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it. Again, I like, I like to thank you for just kind of feeding that and make the process better when we hear from those that are using that website. I'm not the best with a mobile app, but I can only imagine what it does. Yeah, taking you to, yeah. So, we appreciate that.
Ms. Constance takes you back to either the homepage or outside.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Good. All right.
Wow. My head is big.
Right. Committee reports, committee of the whole, June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Lawson?
Okay, committee of the whole, June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We met at six oh nine. Members that attended were Mayor Poole, Esther Boyd, Rosemary Brown, Cindy Chandler, Paula Fitzgerald, me, Robert Lawson was chair, and Aaron Tillman. Also present was Anson Turley, Tim Engel, Kevin Williams, Leroy Williams, and Victoria Banks. We had reading at disposal of the previous minutes, and we all got ayes. We first opened up the meeting with Mr. Turley's manager's report. And biggest thing on, well, these are some of the things that were on the manager's report, was we're hoping July, the end of July's grand opening will be a success. The concrete has been poured, the pavers, we have two different sized pavers. The pavers are the bricks that you walk across where you can actually get your family's name engraved on the stone. So, they'll be there for your grandkids, for their grandkids, for family members. Anybody that walks Harmony Parks Trail, they will see your name on the park, and that's big. Like I said before, the small pavers are a hundred dollars. The bigger pavers are two fifty. So, if you haven't got a paver yet, you can call down to the Woodline Municipal Building. I'm sure they'll get you the right person, so you can get your family a paver. We also talked about Metro Now, and some of my council members say, actually seen the bus going up and down the street. It's two dollars. Two dollars. Two dollars to get on, then you get off at Kroger's, and then two dollars to get back on. So, that's big for our village. Also, our H, our HR audit, Paula Alexander is working on her final report for that. So, we're waiting on that. And also in Mr. Turley's report, we had questions and concerns over Timberland and Timber View. Apparently, work has been done, and we have some defects, defects, and we also need repairs. But it seems like it's possible, most of those defects and repairs are under warranty. So, that's good news. And he'll give you some more of that in his report. Also, we talked about our baseball fields. Seems like when it's sunny, everybody's happy. But when it rains, we have a puddle kind of in the middle of the field, kind of, well, I should say outfield to the infield area. There's a puddle there. So, he's been in contact with people who can help get that field drained, and approximately, quote, roughly now, it's about twenty thousand dollars for both fields. We also had questions and concerns on Ronnie and Woodstock's timeline to get their blacktop in, and he'll go into his report on that. Then also, we had a recreation analyst. So, she's working on her final report, and then she's going to get that to our residents. So, hopefully, she's going to create a survey for our residents, so they can also put in input on what we need down at our recreation department. Okay. And then, our department heads, we went to Paula for Parks and Recreation. She gave information about our two summer camps, and everything is running fine with them. I've been down to the pool. I was checking on our slide. Is our motor fixed, Mr. Turley? Do you know?
Yes, Mr. Lawson. That was fixed. It cost approximately fifteen hundred dollars. They had, the motor had an overload in it, and, but it's been taken care of.
Good. Good. I know they were looking forward to that. And also, I'd like to mention with the pool, also, the shading really looks nice. If you haven't been down to the pool, come down. It's really nice, and you can kind of just chill with your family. Then we went to Public Works, Ms. Victoria Banks. She's kind of short on staff, too. She gave us a list, and I just wanted to kind of show you her list. This, another page, front and back. And then, this was her last page. I just wanted to show that to you, because she's only, she's working with three people. So, if you know anybody who needs a job, you can go to the website, and you can go ahead and apply, because we really need to help. Because it's so bad that we're all, Ms. Fitzgerald actually suggested that we contact services out to help them to actually get picked up, what we need to get picked up out here. Then we went to the Fire Department. Chief Johnson, as you heard, always does an outstanding job. They were up in Baltimore Merlin, and they were doing some projects with, with our drone program, which is really outstanding. I hear a lot of good stuff about our drone, our drone program. Then also, if you don't have a smoke detector and you're a resident of the Village of Woodline, we have a free smoke detector program. So, you just call our favorite, Chief Johnson, and I'm sure he'll get you hooked up. And our Police Department, you heard, we're kind of short on staff. That's no biggie. But with our community, community engagement, Officer Sampson caught a snake. This was a real tough snake. It was terrorizing the neighborhood. So, she captured it, she released it. Everybody went home happy that day. So, kudos to her. Also, for June sixteenth, this meeting was before the June sixteenth celebration, but we did have an Eye in the Sky. Eye in the Sky is the, the big police box that you see up there. So, it looks down through security, can find kids, it can do a lot of stuff. So, me and my sister was actually just kind of looking at it. And when we looked up, we saw the drone up there. We saw the fireworks. So, it would be interesting to see what the drone saw with the fireworks, but that's some more stuff from Chief Johnson that he did. But basically, I mean, the meeting lasted about two hours, twenty minutes. That was probably, I probably left some stuff out, but that was probably the most that we went over. We did have some new business at the end. Tim is going to tell you about the fire truck, five percent interest on that. He'll give you more details. The LED lighting, and then also, we're going to have some more information on Riddle and Bond. That's all I have, Mayor.
Very well. Very well. Any questions for Mr. Lawson and his report?
Just regarding Metro Now?
Uh huh.
It doesn't just take you to...
To Kroger's, correct.
Oh.
So, with that program, as Ms. Rosemary mentioned, that program with the Metro Now, it's more of a convenience. So, you don't have to go all the way to the bus stops on the Pike. In fact, you call them, they come directly to your door. So, it's door-to-door service. They have been in the neighborhood, if you haven't seen them. It looks like a, maybe a ten passenger, fifteen passenger van, and it's clearly marked, Metro Now, it's all over. So, in fact, I seen one come through this morning, about seven thirty, it came through the neighborhood. So, it is active. So, again, it's Metro Now, but they do come to door-to-door service. So, take, take, take up. Yes, and they are very nice people. So, good stuff. Good stuff. Again, any questions for Mr. Lawson?
We have a question.
Yes, Ms. Masula.
Yes. Does the, the bus going, you call it or not, you get it?
Yes, ma'am. So, it's instead of going to your regular bus stop, waiting on that scheduled bus to arrive, you simply call Metro. It's almost like a special service. So, you call Metro, I'm needing a pickup at seven o'clock, and that Metro will come to your door, to your driveway. You come out of your house, to your driveway, get in the van.
Does it also go downtown?
I'm not for sure of the extent. I don't believe it goes that far, because I wanted to say it was more of a, yeah, kind of commute, general commute area here, but it doesn't...
It's Metro, it's Metro Now. So, that's probably, I can get you a number. We'll get you a number.
Yeah, because I...
For some further information, and we'll have some further information.
I think so. I think it's, it don't do nothing but go in your jurisdiction, because it, you can get on the bus and go further out, but yeah. Okay. We'll make sure we get that number, but I...
I'll get it for him, Mayor.
No worries. Appreciate you, clerk. Okay? Good stuff. Good stuff. All right.
I think it would be good if they have Metro Now possibly come out for our next council and maybe give some more information.
I know they did a, a presentation, what, we had a presentation?
Didn't we have a presentation?
Yeah. It came out, and maybe we can make sure that it's on the code red, just enlighten people what is going on, you know, to really push it to the residents. So...
It's a link. There's a link on the website.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Did you, ma'am, there's a link on the website as well?
You saying, is there one?
No, there is.
There is.
Uh huh.
Mr. Turley said there's one on the website as well. I was...
Oh, Ms. Masula. Okay. All right. Finance Committee, Ms. Fitzgerald?
All right. The Finance Committee meeting was June twentieth at seven PM. Meeting was called to order at seven oh five PM. Members present with myself, Esther Boyd, Cindy Chandler, also was Mr. Engel, Mr. Turley, Mr. Willis, Ms. Madden, Robert Lawson also was part of our meeting. The, I'll give you an income tax update. The village has collected eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-three cents in taxes for the month of May. It was distributed as follows by fund. The general fund received six hundred and fifty-five thousand, forty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents. Road tax, a hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eight cents. The debt, thirty-eight thousand, six sixteen fifteen, and capital projects, twenty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-two cents, for a total of eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, three eighty ninety-four. Since inception from two thousand and nineteen to current, we had received a three million, seven hundred and sixteen dollars, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars, sorry, and forty-three cents, and we have dispersed one point, one four, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-five cents. And as you can see, we have some construction that's going on. And so, a lot of the money that's remaining, which is two point five, seven five million dollars that's left, you'll see some of our roads that are being completed this summer with some of the money that is actually left. The village's tax revenues are currently three percent above revenues from last year and twenty percent above tax revenues for two thousand and twenty-one. So, we're still doing great in collections for, as far as our Rita that collects for us, are doing, doing a great job in collecting money for the Village of Woodline. I'm going to leave the rest of the finance report for Mr. Engel to continue, so he can tell you more about his finance information.
Oh, okay. Okay. Any questions for Ms. Fitzgerald thus far in her report? All right. Municipal Managers Report.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. Let's start with some really good news. So, this afternoon, after this report was drafted, the Hamilton County met, had their committee meeting, and their committee, the CRG grant, they awarded us two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in order to purchase the two buildings on Springfield Pike, the one oh one seven five and the one oh one seven one, the Von Bargen addresses. So, they gave us the full amount of... So uh they gave us the full amount of what we requested, uh and that is very good news.
Yes, it is.
Tim and I are gonna.
Good stuff, good stuff, good job.
Tim and I are going to make the contacts tomorrow to get that process uh rolled.
Right.
Uh also, um there had been a some, a mention that the pool lights in the locker room at the pool were low. And so today, I signed the order for that to be taken care of. Uh and so those lights in the locker room will be replaced with LED lights, uh that will be brighter and also designed to fit in that environment. So that's also been taken care of. Uh Juneteenth, this uh celebration was a success, however, we need to have the after-action. So I am working uh with Call a Play to schedule that for July of twenty twenty-three. This morning, I actually sat down with my department heads and we did our own after-action of things that we saw that need attention. We are going to add that uh and bring that with us to the total, the whole after-action that we have with council uh in the hopes of planning an even more successful uh celebration for next year.
Very well.
Harmony Park, I contacted uh the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office this week and they're continuing to investigate the disappearance of the four musical instruments. Uh they have determined that all instruments were shipped uh to the village and, and they're gonna start actually doing um continuing their, their investigation next week. Um also, if you notice, the construction has stopped, and the reason why the construction has stopped is we're waiting for the benches, which were ordered earlier, but of course, supply chains. They should be delivered in July. And then also, they put a rush on the four musical instruments, cuz we reordered them, and they should also be delivered in July. So the company that we've contracted with have been excellent to work with, they have a really good site supervisor and a really good contractor. And um he's assured us that as soon as those instruments come in, they will continue with the work. We're still shooting for a groundbreaking, uh well, a completion by the end of the month, and then we wanna have a groundbreaking ceremony very shortly after that. Uh we've talked about Metro Now, Lee Crest Road. Remember, the village did receive, we did not receive the grant to repair Lee Crest Road, but we did receive a zero percent loan from the OPWC. And um the paperworks uh for that grant and to get that initiated and implemented should begin after July first. So I'm working with the finance director, I will keep the council updated. But uh it is a good thing that we can also use the money from the road fund uh to get Lee Crest repaired from Riddle all the way to the uh boundary of the village, where it goes into Springfield Township, so that entire section. I talked to Ms. Alexander today, uh she stated that she only has nine respondents to the HR survey. Uh she is going to start finalizing her report, uh and then I will be in discussions with her and meet with her soon in order to get that finalized. And then she wants to make a presentation to the council regarding not only the recommendations that she has, but then a strategic plan that we can use to improve our HR system. I'm gonna skip down to Timberland and Timberview. Um unfortunately, we're having problems contacting the company that did the work. That is one of the reasons we withheld ten thousand dollars. Uh if we cannot contact that company, we will use that ten thousand dollars to pay for the work from another company. And then we will also keep a note of uh the issues that we have, and we will make decisions in the future based upon, you know. It, everything, the decision that, that I make will be for the benefit of the village, right?
Okay.
Uh there's uh no further update on the baseball field, we still have that quote out there. If we do work on the field, it will be in the fall, cuz it will involve some drainage, maybe even some planting of a little bit of turf, and you wanna, don't wanna do that in the summer heat. Good note, news with Ronnie Road and Woodstock. The pipe, the water main that we were waiting is, it's either here or it's on its way. So we are right on schedule for an early July groundbreaking uh to repave uh both Ronnie Road and Woodstock. Uh I will be talking to the construction company and also our consultant later on this week, and with the information that I have, we will send out code reds to the residents. We also actually have a list where they've given us all their contact information, and if need be, uh last time we walked the street and we left door knockers. So one or the other, the residents will be notified exactly what's going on, so that we can cause as little disruption as possible. Um the recreation department program analysis, the next section of that will be the survey that will go out to every home. Uh we need to talk up the survey, because talking to Mr. Younger from Pro's Consulting, the survey's only valid if we get at least two hundred and fifty responses. Typically, it's hard to get people to respond to surveys, so as you talk to your constituents, as you go forward, preach this survey. As they watch this meeting, there's a survey that's gonna be coming to their home, where we want their input on what they want to see offered at the recreation center. And we are gonna use that to form a plan, a strategic plan, so that we will offer those things that the community wants. And then that plan will be adopted by council, and then as we go forward, if someone asks, well, why are you doing this? Then we can go back to according to the survey, according to this analysis, these are the things the community wants, and these are the things that we are going to offer.
Take another question?
Oh, sure.
So I asked, I know at one of the, the other meetings, are we gonna try to put out some type of signage or something?
You know what?
To encourage our residents to take the survey?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Yes, we are, yeah.
Is there any other things we've thought about doing, all calls regularly?
All calls, signage, um again.
Are they gonna be at the rec center or are they gonna be out if the case they're, you know? They lost it or they haven't gotten it, or are there gonna be other?
So that's a good uh question.
You know, if I'm at the rec center, oh, I, I didn't, I forgot to fill it out, is that something that I can do quickly, or is it something that I need to, more time?
You're gonna need more time, and that's why they send it to the home. So it'll probably take approximately, you know, fifteen minutes, half an hour to fill out the survey, because it's, and it's how in-depth you want, yeah, if you complete it. So it's, it won't be something, it's not like one of those quick, you know, five stars and, you know, s- submit, but they'll need some time, which is why it's being sent to their house.
But there's also online as well, right?
No.
No.
You cannot, that, that destroys the validity of the survey.
Okay, so it's just.
Because you need to know who the respondent is, you need to know that they in fact live in the village.
Two hundred times.
Once you put it online, I can fill that out a hundred times, and you're only getting my perspective, but it looks like you're getting a, a big sample size, but you're only getting one person.
Right.
So are we gonna have some down here extras that if people don't seem to, I mean, there's no perfect delivery, right? So if they don't get it, are, we gonna have, where they have access to getting another copy or something?
Let me ask um Leon from Pro's Consulting uh about that. I think it's a good idea, but I wanna make sure that that won't corrupt the, the authenticity, you know, the effectiveness of the survey.
Of the survey.
Yeah, because it seems like if it's not online and they can pick it up, it's the same process, we don't know if it's.
If somebody comes who doesn't live in the village.
Exactly, yeah, that's your fear, okay.
How are people going to turn it in to you?
There will be a self-return stamp to the envelope, so you'll get it, you'll fill it out, and you drop it in the mailbox. And it's actually gonna go to our, the consultant who created the survey.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good, yes, sir.
So has shifted, shifted from what they told us in our meeting, it's only gonna be done one way now? They were saying they were gonna have it done electronically, use the phone, so it's now shifted?
You know, let me, let me find out about that. I know that they can't do it online, cuz we've asked that question several times.
I think he's speaking of the focus group.
Oh, he's talking about the focus, okay, yeah, I got you. So yeah, you're speaking of the focus group where they actually talk to the people, where they could talk to you on the phone or in person. The survey's always been mail it to the, the residents.
Okay, okay.
Now, that's a good question.
Okay, we need to just clarify that, just clarify it, okay? It, cuz I'm hearing that we, we, it sounds like in that meeting, we heard two different things, so again, just clarify it.
I will.
Okay, that way we're on the same page, okay?
I got another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um this is in regards to Timberland and Timberview.
Mm-hmm.
Um so you said we were unable to get in touch with the company that did the work for us? And my question is to Emily, um what can we do legally to go after this company to finish up some of the questions that we have in their work? Because, I mean.
We'd have to, I'd have to pull the contract and see what the remedies are within the contract.
I think we should do that, instead of just saying, we're just gonna, you know, we kept.
I mean, typically, typically, the remedy is that you have retainage and that you can, if, if you have reached out and they have failed to perform the way they're supposed to, you can then terminate the contract, use the retainage to, to hire another contractor, that's typically the remedy that you.
So what happens if the amount is over what you held?
Well, they're supposed to get paid as the work progresses, so it, there, there's supposed to be enough retainage to address things as they are inspected.
So there was ten thousand dollars withheld, but if there's more than ten thousand dollars worth of work, where, how, what's the next steps?
So technically, they completed the work, it's just that after they completed it, we had some cracking, we need some sealing, we had some spalling. So the, the amount of the scope of work that we paid for, or in the contract, they completed all of it. They didn't leave us, you know, with no catch basins installed or something.
But there's still a guarantee of some sort, they, I mean, it's a year guarantee, and this could, these residents have been complaining for a little while now, so that's why I'm trying to understand. Is there something that they still need to do, or do we need to push forward, or what's the next steps if it, we've been talking about this a little bit now?
You know, it would be, it would be a breach of contract, so I would have to look at the contract and see what our remedies are within the contract.
Yeah, cuz I could see if we reached out to them late, but this was right after the fact, pretty much, so that's why I'm asking a lot of questions.
Right.
No problem, okay.
Okay.
A very good question.
Okay, good stuff, good stuff, okay. You can take a peek at that, you definitely can take a peek at it, yeah. Alright, good stuff, good stuff, alright. Finance director's report.
Mayor, uh I'm gonna pick up where uh Ms. Fitzgerald left off. Uh we reviewed our appropriations reports at finance committee. We reviewed appropriations reports at finance committee, uh the uh village uh has spent, I'm sorry, the village is uh uh forty percent of budgeted revenues and they've spent a twenty-four percent of appropriation. Uh we've reviewed receipts and disbursements reports, uh for the month of May, uh the village collected one million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, under eleven dollars and dispersed seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Uh general fund disbursements were higher than total village disbursements, where the village has dispersed thirty-seven percent of general fund budgeted expenditures and collected fifty-four percent of total general fund budgeted receipts. We also reviewed the fund balance reports, bank reconciliation reports, as well as overtime and salary reports. Uh and also, we briefly had some reports related to recreation expenditures versus receipts. Um as as to uh going to a little bit of detail on some legislation we have for tonight, uh we have uh appropriations amendment on our agenda. Um and we're asking for a five hundred thousand dollar increase in the road tax fund, that would be to pay for some of the additional road constructions being done this year. Uh we're also asking for an increase of thirty thousand dollars uh to the police budget for uniforms. Uh interim Chief Williams, uh as he's noted, is uh in the process of uh acquiring a couple more police officers. We also had some new hires between the end of last meeting and this year, so uh we need to make sure that they're outfitted properly. Um and finally, uh we were looking for a fifty-six thousand dollar increase um in our general uh budget. And uh the purpose of that was to go ahead and pay for the remainder of Harmony Park, that fifty-six thousand will be reimbursed to us by the CIC. But we wanna make sure we appropriate that so we can pay them directly, we don't have delays. Also, um looking at a resolution for uh.
Exxon?
Yeah, uh well, no, I'm sorry, it was the income tax resolution.
Okay.
Uh we wanna make sure that everybody was aware uh that the income tax is expiring at the end of this year. So uh this is essentially a renewal of that tax for the additional five years to continue the road construction. Um additional language was added, will be added to the new item to vote on to allow the payment of new sidewalks. If the sidewalk wasn't originally theirs, we can install a new one, which allows us to take additional advantage of stored money that has become available over the past few years. So we wanna make sure that those were, uh we went ahead and talked about those just a little bit. Um other than that, I, I know that um we had mentioned very briefly the financing for the fire engine. Uh we are still discussing that lease contract with the um uh loan company. Um there's some language in there that um our attorneys wish to have removed, so I know we've kind of been going back and forth with that. Um if we can get that finalized, um we'll try to get that, well, hopefully, we can have a special meeting and get that voted on, otherwise, there might be a little bit of a delay in that. Uh but we gotta make sure the language is right before we can proceed.
Okay.
Um other than that, I don't believe I had anything else uh for finance.
Pam?
For the approval of the receipt report, expenditure report, and bank reconciliation.
Very well, Ms. Fitzgerald?
Uh I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the bank reconciliation receipts listing and payment listing.
Second.
Motion been moved and properly second, all ayes?
Aye.
Very well, law director's report. I'm sorry.
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
Just for Claire.
Uh huh.
Uh the three percent, is that the existing uh the road funds?
So it's, it's, it's three tenths of a percent.
There's some exist, that's already there?
Yes, you're, you're currently already paying it.
It's set to expire?
Set to expire at December thirty-one of this year, yes, sir.
So this is going before the voters?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh we did that, law director's report.
And just to clarify the process on that, um that, that there are two pieces of legislation within here that deal with that item. The first is an ordinance that amends our income tax code to add that point three percent for the period of um January first, twenty twenty-four, for a five-year period. Um but that cannot take effect unless it is voted on. Um so we pass that first, and then we pass the resolution to place that on the ballot.
Correct.
Yep.
Correct, okay.
And that is all, has already taken place, we're just basically redoing the road tax revenue again.
Right, that's, there's no change other than the addition of being able to construct new sidewalks.
Right.
Correct, okay, very well, alright, any other questions for law director? Alright, yes, you do?
I said no.
Oh, okay, alright, mayor's report, just wanna um couple, uh just wanna recap, I wanna talk about Juneteenth again. Um hats off, uh police department, fire department, uh you guys went over and beyond, right? You were totally visible out there, I think our residents, um we, we, we run into our residents, they kinda give us some feedback on that. Um the event was just top-notch, um and when you feel safe, when you're at an event feeling safe, I felt very safe. Um and to Mr. Lawson's point about this um sky, sky tower, the sky tower. Um that, that sky tower, you know, there were many people in the crowd, what is that? And my response is always, security, and I'll leave it there, I don't really wanna go into detail, because again, that's something, that's not my subject matter expert, I'm not that. However, I do know it's a security thing, so again, hats off to you, your team, uh recreation for just doing a wonderful, wonderful Juneteenth celebration. Um and I'm just looking forward to it happening next year, we get to sit down and just kinda recap of what we seen, what we like to see better for next year. Um and let's just make it even better for next year, so I'm excited about that. Um that is all that I have, I got one thing that I'm gonna ask the vice mayor to do, I just need a motion to approve my mayor's monthly court statement, please.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve the mayor's court monthly statement for the period of May twenty twenty-three in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars, nine hundred and ninety, fourteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. I'll sign it.
Okay, alright, motion been moved and properly second, all ayes?
Aye.
Very well, very well, legislation.
First item is ordinance number twenty, twenty twenty-three, and ordinance amending sections three point zero two, three point zero four B, and five point zero three E of the Village of Woodline Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual and declaring an emergency.
Very well, I need a motion to suspend the roof for. I need a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number?
Yes, a question.
Yes, you may.
I thought I remember a conversation where it was said that because we're having the HR analysis done, that we were going to wait for any policy changes that, so that we could do them all at once. There was an anticipation that there may be several or couple policy changes, so are we diverting from that?
Right now, we are doing several pretty intense disciplinary investigations that these particular changes would really help, and these are policies that would be better done now than after the, we wait for the HR analysis. That is the reason why I requested that it come before the council at this time. Of course, it is the council's pleasure, but these are something that need really to be taken care of.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Again, I need a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number 202023. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number 2023? Table it.
Mr. Staff, first reading.
Okay.
The next item is ordinance 212023, an ordinance amending section 882012 of the Village of Woodline Code of Ordinances to impose an additional three tenths of one percent income tax effective January 1st, 2024, for a period of five years, to be used solely for the construction, repair, improvement, and maintenance of streets, roads, curbs, and sidewalks in the village, and appurtenances thereto, including principal and interest on bonds or notes issued for any of those purposes, and declaring an emergency.
Very well. I need a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number 212023.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules of ordinance number 212023.
I'll second.
Motion been moved and properly second. Roll call on the suspension. Ms. Fitzgerald, second motion.
Mr. Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Karen Solomon III?
Aye.
I need a motion for passage of ordinance number 212023.
I'll make a motion for passage of ordinance number 212023.
I'll second it.
Motion been moved and properly second. Roll call on the passage, please.
Mr. Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Karen Solomon III?
Aye.
I need a motion declaring an emergency of ordinance number 212023.
I'll make a motion declaring ordinance number 212023 an emergency.
I'll second.
Motion been moved and properly second on the emergency. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Karen Solomon III?
Aye.
The next item is ordinance number 222023, an ordinance amending appropriations for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023.
I need a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number 222023.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules of ordinance number 222023.
I'll second.
Motion been moved and properly second. Roll call on the suspension, please.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Karen Solomon III?
Aye.
Mr. Boyd?
Aye.
Very well. I need a motion for passage of ordinance number 222023.
I'd like to make a motion for passage of ordinance number 222023. I'll second.
Motion been moved and properly second. Roll call on the passage, please.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Karen Solomon III?
Aye.
Mr. Boyd?
Aye.
The next item is resolution number 232023, a resolution authorizing the municipal manager to enter into a contract with Axon Enterprise Inc. for body worn camera software and related services.
Very well. I need a motion for passage of resolution number 232023.
I'll make the motion for a resolu, passage for resolutions 232023.
I'll second.
Motion been moved and properly second. Roll call on the passage, please.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Karen Solomon III?
Aye.
Mr. Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Very well.
Next item is resolution number 242023, a resolution directing the Board of Elections of Hamilton County to place upon the ballot at the general election to be held on November 7th, 2023, the question of approving an ordinance to amend section 882.012 of the Village of Woodline Code of Ordinances to impose an additional three tenths of one percent income tax effective January 1st, 2024, for a period of five years, to be used solely for the construction, repair, improvement, and maintenance of streets, roads, curbs, and sidewalks in the village, and appurtenances thereto, including principal and interest on bonds or notes issued for any of those purposes.
I need a motion for passage of resolution number 242023.
I'll make that motion for passage of resolution number 242023.
I'll second it.
Motion been moved and properly second. Roll call on the passage, please.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Karen Solomon III?
Aye.
Mr. Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. Fitzgerald?[1684.16]